Oh, yeah.
All right, at six thirty, we'd like to call the Far West City Council meeting to order. Thank you for being here, those are visiting and those are going to be participating. We'll start with a pledge led by
But we're gonna start with a prayer.
Opening prayer by David J.
And then a pledge.
And thank you.
And then a pledge by Bob Lynn.
Our Father in Heaven, as we assemble here this evening, we thank Thee for the freedoms that provide us the opportunity to be involved in the government and affairs of our own city. And pray that tonight, as we are here, that we may dispatch the business before us in an appropriate way. And that we may be guided in our conversations and our interactions with one another in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
So we'll stay up.
You would please stand with me and I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob and David, for doing that. I would like to open the meeting and see if there's any public comments that aren't related to anything that's on the agenda. Okay, come up. Tell us your name and what's your
Hey, my name's James Anderson. I was back, I was here back on November the second. And the subject matter was the speeding on North twenty-five seventy-five West. Does that ring in any bells? And I haven't heard anything since then. I know you've had a city council changeover since then. So I did email one of the city council members, I believe the young lady. Yes, Katie. Oh, okay. Excellent. I just wanted to make sure that didn't get lost in the shuffle, so. Okay, thank you very much.
Just so you know, we get a daily report on what the sheriff's doing. There have been many, many, many tickets written since November second on that street. So just so you're aware.
I've seen people pulled over, but
It tells us that, you know, what they were cited or, you know. So so there's there's some activity in the sheriff's office has been really good to support us on that, so.
I know that it does take an effort to do, you know, twenty-five miles an hour down that street. It, you know, really does, but sometimes, you know, some of these folks, they're just going way too fast, you know. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments and thank you for being here. So thank you. All right, any other public comments? Okay, Geneva sent me a text that she was not going to be here. And Lyle, I think he's having some, anyway, there's some things going on with his health, so this is what Geneva said. Just an update, we had a work session to finalize the C two updates. And then in our meeting, we approved the sign for the medical center. That's the one that's on our our agenda tonight. Everything looked great. And then she said, let me know if you have any questions. So that is the planning commission report. Guess if we're gonna have any questions, we'll have to ask her. Lou, is there anything else that we should be aware of?
A real short meeting. It was very short, very non-confrontational. And the progress on the C two is ongoing.
Right.
That was the final meeting for that. It's ongoing. We focus primarily on definition of flags.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, then we'll move on to the next agenda item. Okay. I don't know that we have any assignments or direction for the planning commission at this point.
There will be some coming, but they're not ready yet.
Okay.
Okay. And Geneva's aware of what's in the pipe, but it's not not ready yet.
Hey, we're here to consider the approval of the minutes dated March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I have a motion that we approve the minutes dated March twenty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, we have a motion by Bob, a second by Tim. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, everyone aye, everything's unanimous, so thank you. The bills, have we had a chance to take a look at those?
Yes, we have.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
I move that we pay the bills dated April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion by David?
I'll second.
Second by Tim. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous again. Thank you. Should probably should have done roll call on that. Let's do roll call. David?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Boyd, aye. Okay, thank you. All right, the next item of business is to consider the approval of a business license for the Snack Shack. Scott West? If you're, are you, is anybody here with that? Okay.
So when I reviewed the request, there was not an address for the facility.
That would be my question is where is this?
It's a truck or a trailer. It's mobile. Actually, that's what they're saying. It's, you know, it's able to move.
So it's like the corn dog truck, huh?
But for snacks.
Do we feel like he needs to be here for this meeting, or do you think that's something we can improve?
Well, there was, there was just one question that I was gonna ask him about health. And make sure he has his health certificate for the trailer or the truck or whatever he's gonna mobile in. And that is fire permit. Because some of them, if it has a stove, an exhaust flue, that needs to be approved. So those were my questions to him, but he's not here to answer.
We have answers for those. I'd suggest we table this until we get them.
Hey, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we table the request for a business license for Snack Shack pending information about health and fire safety.
Fire safety in the vehicle.
Okay, I have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by David, a second by Bob. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, looks like it carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. We have the four H group from Fremont High School with us, and thank you for being here. We appreciate, appreciate all of you, so you look good. It's a good looking group, Cassie.
They are, yes. Board, thank you so much for being here. We're very excited to present to you guys today. My name is Cassie Joyner. I am an FFA advisor and agriculture teacher, one of many at Fremont High School. We are be, we are here on behalf of the newly formed Weber Junior Livestock Association to bring these kids to you, to give you a little bit of a rundown of what that association is, what they do, some of the benefits that these youth receive from being a part of that group. And some of the things that we need and support from our community leaders like yourself that will be vital to the continued success of this program. The Weber Junior Livestock Association was formed last year, so this will be our second year operating without the funds from the county and the county commissioners. They asked us to separate and become our own, our own entity. These kids have the opportunity to raise livestock throughout the summer, including beef cows, sheep, goats and pigs. Make sure I say them in the right order. And then they are able to show them and sell them at the Weber County Fair. They learn a variety of skills and I'm gonna have these guys introduce themselves and maybe explain a little bit about what they've done and accomplished in the program and some of the things they've experienced being part of the four H and FFA and the WJLA.
Okay, hi, my name is Rachel Daniels and I'm actually this year's treasurer for Fremont. And for this organization, I've met a lot of people who have the same passion for agriculture as me. And I've learned a lot about my love for animals, about how to take care of our world. And at the, we were livestock. I always help with the auction. I'm always up there helping, making sure everyone gets stuff and I take care of animals during the year. And I really just enjoy all the people I've met through it and the program that I've learned through.
Hi, my name is Garrett. I'm a hog ambassador for the four H. I've been showing for, this will be my ninth year. And it's taught me a lot of skills. It's taught me responsibility, discipline. I've been given the opportunity to teach younger kids how to show. And it is a good time to show in land and hogs. The Weber Junior Livestock Association and the fair split last year, and so we've been having to rent the Golden Spike Arena. And this year, they, we didn't get a discount like we did last year, and so a sponsorship will really help us because we have to go buy iPads. We have to go buy everything for the auction. We have to get judges here. Did we had last year, didn't like to fly, so we had to drive them up here from Texas.
Fussy pigs.
But a lot of that will help. We're still gonna do it at the same time as the fair. But since we split, the fair doesn't think that the animals, that the, when you're, the Junior Livestock Association brings any people. But that's also true, it doesn't really. But I could go to the fair for the shows and to see the animals. Because I also like interacting with all the other four H members and seeing how different they do it, the other ideas I can get. That's all.
Hi, I'm Kirsten Mitchell. I'm this year's Fremont, Fremont FFA's Assistant Secretary. One thing that agriculture has taught me is I've been raving, raising livestock my whole life. One thing I never really focused on until I had my own show, Animals, is the financial aspect of owning a farm and dealing with this stuff like that. And that's one thing that showing an animal is totally different. You learn how to deal with money and that is something where you have a job, but that money's just coming in and something that's different about showing animals is the money's going out and you gotta figure out if you'll be okay when it's coming back in. And this experience of showing can have you meet so many people and you get to know and talk to anyone anywhere you go. Recently, I went down to Murray with my family and I was talking to the server and he's like, oh, yeah, I show livestock. And I was like, no way, me too. I was like, what are you interested in? And he goes, agriculture is just so important to me. And that's one thing that was like so crazy to me is I was like, it shouldn't be important to everybody because if we don't care about it and we don't hope our kids care about it, then it won't keep going in the future and we won't have this farmland and we'll struggle with things like food and stuff. And financial is something very important that kids need to learn. Thank you so much.
So these guys are what we call the cream of the crop. They're great advocates for agriculture. Just on a personal note, I grew up here in Weber County and participated in both these programs, Raise and Raise Livestock for the County Fair. And I consider myself a product of those, of that program. And I enjoyed it so much and learned so much that I made a career out of it. So I'm super excited to be working, working with, with these great kids. We're not just raising livestock, we're raising kids and we're also building a community. So we are just here before you guys just pleading with city councils. We'll be visiting several cities in the county. Just kind of keep these kids in the back of your mind as you are making decisions that affect, you know, whether it's city planning and zoning, things like that. Just, just know that these kids want to be involved. When I first started teaching agriculture ten years ago, there were seven ag teachers. Now we're gonna be hitting the seventeen mark this fall. So there are many kids that want to be involved in four H and FFA. They want to be able to show animals and be involved in agriculture. So please just keep them, keep them in the back, back of your mind. We were so grateful for the donation that you gave the Junior Livestock Association last year. Like they kind of mentioned, we are kind of really heavily reliant on sponsorships this year as we've now separated from, from the county funding a lot of that for us. So we are hoping that this council will consider that again, and if not, please just recommend us to the people that you know. Please encourage other city leaders, community leaders, business owners here in Far West to be able to support these kids, whether it's by buying an animal or being a sponsor of our show at the fair. We'd really appreciate that. This program is definitely not, not dying. Agriculture is not dying here. You know, cities like this and where I live is urbanizing fast. People want to be involved in it, as you can see, like these great kids are trying to be involved in as well. So I gave some information to you if you guys wanna look at that. If you have any more questions, I wanna know some more things, there is a Junior Livestock Association website. But honestly, the best resource is just these kids and the people that are involved in it.
Cassie, can you remind us what we, what our donation was last?
It goes two thousand, two thousand dollars, I think is what you guys donated last year. When we split from the county, the county commissioner said that we will, we, last year, they would match any donation that cities donated. So we were able to get a really nice startup fund from that. But like we said, we're heavily reliant on people and businesses who are willing to support these kids. We wanna keep this going. The Junior Livestock Show has been a part of the fair since it started and we do not wanna see it go away.
Is the county still willing to match any funds or they totally divorced themselves now?
I'm pretty sure we're totally separated now. We are presenting at WACog in a couple of months, so hopefully we'll get some, get some support there. But as far as I know, as of right now, there's not gonna be any match.
What is your delta need to be successful? And then what are you, what's your goal? How much is the minimum that you need to raise and what is your?
So last year, and you'd have to ask a WJLA board member for solid numbers. But I think it was about thirty thousand dollars to put on the show. And so we are hoping to, you know, kind of recoup, recoup the cost of that. So like, he kind of mentioned, we have to pay for, to rent the facility to have our kids there at the fair and that's at a premium cost because it's during the county fair, right? That real estate isn't cheap. We pay for judges, all the kids' awards. Our auction is a big deal. We make sure that we spoil our buyers that are there that are supporting these kids. So it does cost a lot of money and it's a lot of manpower to, to put on the show. I will say that the board and the people who help with that, many of them have kids who are involved in the program, but a lot of them have kids who have graduated from the program and they still see the benefit of being involved and kind of helping the next generation.
So you will accept donations from private businesses?
Yes, private businesses, individuals.
How would they go about doing that?
On that paper there that I gave to you, there's a contact. There Kelly Hells, she is the WJLA sponsorship contact. You can kind of see like the different levels as far as like if you individually or you know someone who wants to donate. And then there's also like, if you donate this much, you would be the sponsor of the arena or the sponsor of the steer buckles or what, like you can kind of pick items you wanna donate. Sometimes we have businesses that are
Greg Jensen's still another contact.
He is our, our WJLA president. He's done a fantastic job jumping in and taking on this huge task of separating us from the county and making us a nonprofit and he's been amazing.
So you are a five oh one C three, it's non-prop, so that should entice people to get
Yes, yep. And when people buy animals at the fair, when buyers, businesses, whether individuals or businesses, that's a tax write-off. They can donate the meat if they don't wanna, you know, butcher the animal and take it home with them. They can donate the meat to the food bank, so there's donation opportunities there. Like it really is just a great program, not for the kids, but for the adults in the community to be involved in as well.
That's good.
I'm trying to look at this. Liam, will you look at that? I don't think we can vote on this tonight. Is that correct? We need to make it as a, because it's not a decision.
On the agenda.
It's an expenditure.
So.
Listed as an action item for purposes of deciding any funding or anything like that, so.
To get it back on the agenda. That's what I'm thinking. Put it in the budget, make sure we have it in there. Here's
It would be a good idea.
We should have it on the agenda.
Yeah, it should be.
Thank you, with, with an action, but I, I love this program. I've been a personal supporter of it for a number of years, but I have seen the Garrett Jakes of the world. I've almost been, been with Garrett for nine years through this too, and so, and others, but they, they have grown and they have done good things with this. Garrett talked about training and teaching others. And Garrett and his dad and mom and Cassie's dad this last year were really great supporters of my grandkids doing this. And so they're teaching them and they're gonna do it again this year. I was talking to my granddaughter this morning as I took them to school. And, and they're, they said we should get our lambs this week. And so it's, they're, it's exciting.
It's all about growing the next generation. Yep.
And so, so I, I think this is a great pro, we have so many youth from Far West that participate in this that I think we would be amiss if we didn't participate and continue.
You guys know numbers. I don't have the actual numbers for Far West. Overall, last year, we sold four hundred and forty-five, I think, project animals through, through the auction. It's almost a million dollars going through, through that auction, so it's a lot to manage. I would venture to guess, just through the kids that I know and I work with, there's probably forty to fifty kids within Far West city limits that are raising animals for the fair.
It's the youngest.
The youngest is eight years old. They can start when they're eight. But we also have a Pee-wee program, so five, five to eight, they can show bucket calf. My daughter's five, she's raising a bucket calf this year. Three times a day, we're out bottle feeding it, so she's learning a lot.
Cassie, I have an ulterior motive here in this. We have not had a Far West City Youth Council for several years now. And you're out at Fremont.
Yes.
We need to start that up again. And so it would be helpful for me to be able to contact you and maybe see if there's someone else out there we could talk to and some other organizations where we could draw a half a dozen kids into this youth city council for Far West. It would be really great if we had one or two of your group
Yes.
here.
We have a lot of great kids. We could recommend to you for sure.
I would appreciate it. And so you and I need to trade some information.
Perfect.
I'd like to draw that into what we're doing a little bit if we can.
That would be great, yeah. And these guys, you know, all three of these kids are here. I know you live in Far West. You guys don't.
Garrett, how old, but where are you in school?
I'm a junior.
Junior right now? You'll be a senior next year? We need a mayor.
Looks great on this scholarship.
So you know, if any of you are interested in that, or Cassie, you know some others that might be.
We can send some good kids your way for sure.
That would really be wonderful. You can call the office and give names and numbers. They can give you my contact information for anybody that might be interested. The school year is not over yet. The juniors are a great group and the sophomores to approach on this in particular. The seniors, they're gone already.
Yeah, they're checked out.
Talking to them, you know. We'd really like to see some of the younger ones get involved with what we're doing here in the city. This would be a great place for this voice to have a broader range.
Yes.
So think it over.
We'll get this on the agenda. We'll get it put into the budget and we'll
Perfect. Well, we would really appreciate if you guys consider that and hopefully we can get it passed next time. I'll just, I'll just end with, one of my favorite quotes is, it's a great thing to produce a grand champion steer, hog or lamb, but unless you've done something to produce a grand champion kid, you failed in your greatest responsibility. So that's what we're trying to do, produce some grand champion kids and maybe some, get some belt buckles along the way too. So thank you for your time, council. We appreciate you listening to us and these kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks, all of you.
You didn't mind me putting that plug in there?
No, no, that's correct.
I think this is a great contact point.
All right, we're here to consider the approval of the request of a sign for the North Ogden Surgery Center located at eighteen oh four West, twenty-five fifty North.
We have a rendering of that?
There was a rendering in the
I think we have one in our
Find it in the packet.
Woodchase tie, ground.
See, it's about forty. It meets the sign order and said it was vetted by the, the planning commission. I don't have any problems with it. If you guys don't.
It looks good. I like it.
So do we have any?
What's it made of? Is it just wood? Is it concrete?
Mostly aluminum, isn't it? Aluminum plastic with lights.
It's an aluminum structure. Good, good, because wood kind of tends to go to the dogs after a while.
I can entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the sign for North Ogden Surgery Center at eighteen oh four West, twenty-five fifty North.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motions.
Okay, motion by Tim, second by Bob. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, so build a sign. Okay, thank you. All right, let's see. Consider the allocation of twenty twenty-four Ramp Municipality Grant. Is there anyone that's, is here to speak on that?
No.
Just me?
What do you know, boy?
I don't. Oh. Okay.
We typically use them towards fireworks.
That's exactly, okay, I know which one it is now. So, so we do have this grant. Thank you. This, thank you for reminding me. This, this grant we get, like she said, annually, we, we put it towards the Freedom Festival for the fireworks to, to help with that cost there. It's like this year, it's seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars. That can go anywhere, but that's where we put it in the past. How does the council feel? What should we should do with this? Seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Well, if the Freedom Festival doesn't have this input of funds, what kind of an impact does that have on our celebration?
It's gonna come, it's gonna come out of the budget. That's what I was just gonna say.
So it's got Okay. And parks-related projects and Freedom Festival is a recreation parks-related project.
And even though that's a consumable, that's still okay, according to their
Every year, yeah.
And what is the, the cost of the Freedom Festival? Would there be any leftover or would we use?
Oh, no, we use everything.
Fireworks, we'll eat this up. Okay. This'll light the fireworks. This'll buy us a match. Yeah, okay. Understand. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with the allocation going to the Freedom Festival.
Is that a motion?
I have a motion that we use the Ramp funding for twenty twenty-four, the seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars in the municipality grant to use, be used and utilized for the Freedom Festival.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Bob, second by David. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote. David?
Aye.
Aye. Bob, Tim?
Aye.
Boyd, I vote aye. So thank you. I think that's a good place for it to go. Will we make sure, Lindsay, that the proper documentation gets done so we can sign that and send it back, whatever. Okay. All right, we're, we're down to reporting on our assignments. This has gone pretty fast today, so, but Tim, talk to us about your assignments.
I actually have nothing to report today.
Okay, Bob?
I have a couple of things. The first one was I, I audited and listened into the UDOT transportation meetings and the funding portion of that, the RTAG as well. So we had the, the UDOT meetings to talk about what is coming forward and there was nothing significant for Far West. But within our region, there's going to be a lot of construction over the next two years that we need to kind of talk to our counterparts in Pleasant View, in our Marriott Slaterville counterparts to make sure that their traffic issues won't become our traffic issues. Or at least to try and minimize some of the things that are gonna happen in this region. So I'm just saying that I probably need to reach out with David and go talk to our counterparts to make sure that we're not gonna have any impacts. The mayor asked me to sit in for the RTAG meeting and that went well. What we found out there is that the roundabout at twelve hundred and Harrisville Road will be funded by the RTAG or the TAC for nine hundred thousand dollars of the one point six million. And they suggested that we go back to the county for additional or for funding to match or to bolster before any more comes out of our budget. So that's something the mayor will have to do for us.
Okay.
I sat in on a telecom just a day ago, put on by the, the sheriff and it was a communications-oriented Zoom meeting. And the idea was to bring the ecumenical organizations within Far West and from our perspective from the churches or from anybody that has an organization to react to emergencies. And how are they going to communicate using FRC radios, GMRC radios or ham radios? And there is a plan in place. We need to make sure that down to our ward and stake levels that we align with the county, so we don't step on each other's toes. That we don't overburden the radio systems, that we can actually communicate with them with the same style and frequencies of radios. It was a beneficial meeting. I learned a lot that I need to pass along and that we need to get out to the ecumenical organizations. The meeting was under-participated. The meeting was under-participated. There were only eight people of 80 that were invited that participated. But it's very important so that we can all work together should the need arise. So I have some more homework to do and some more legwork to do to go out and try and meet our CERT and our city counterpart for communications. Make sure that we, again, are working together, um, and not adverse to each other. And that is my report.
Okay, thank you. David?
Couple of things. Uh, we've had a housing committee meeting. We have another one scheduled for the 7th of May. We are, uh, looking at some revisions to the C3 zone. That's a very specific area of the city, uh, north of 2700 North and east of I-15. There are some major discussions going on relevant to that piece of property. Not anything I can disclose here because it hasn't come to the, to the surface all the way. But it does require some amendments to that C3 zone in order for what is being proposed to take place. I know that sounds vague. It'll get more specific with time. And so we've been meeting with, uh, the developers that are trying to move that project forward. It's a group called Woodsonia. And, uh, we've had, uh, two meetings with them in the last two weeks regarding this. And so we've drafted a, a preliminary, um, amendment to the C3 zone. That's in the mayor's hands, I think. Liam, you're gonna get that if you don't have it already. You will from the mayor. Uh, we're not changing anything in, uh, in that zone. What we want to do is add an additional category to it that will enable, um, some additional development in that zone. Okay, uh, and so that's probably been our primary activity in the last month. We didn't hold our last city council meeting. And, uh, we'll just, we'll report on that to the degree that we can as it continues to mature. All right, um, the housing committee is also working in conjunction with that to work out the strategies necessary for us to meet the state requirements for our moderate and affordable income housing. Re, it's not a request, it's a requirement. Uh, we had three of five that were accepted last year. Uh, we're trying to do some things to preserve the three that were approved. And hopefully what we're doing with the C3 zone will enable us to get those other two, other two, uh, into an approval, uh, position. So all of this is kinda working together. And it's an ongoing process. And that's where we are with it. Tim?
Can I just add to that a little bit? That C3 zone is really geared towards this particular piece of property. It's not something that the entire city.
No, it's not gonna go anywhere else. It's very isolated.
But it's ideal for that property, so it's a good move.
Yeah, what's coming, if, if we can make it happen, is going to be, uh, a major positive development for Far West.
Thank you, good. Appreciate that. The last month, I've had to, uh, had the opportunity to attend two awards banquet. One's for the sheriff's department and one for the fire department. We are well-served as far as our, our safety and, uh, our public servants are. They, they do such a good job. It was interesting to hear some of the stories that took place or that have taken place over the year. And, uh, they, they really do risk their lives for each of us. Uh, maybe we don't have those incidences right here in Far West as often, but, uh, other places. And so just wanted to give a, a shout out to both Sheriff's Office and Weber County, or Weber Fire District for all that they are doing and, you know, just grateful for them. This is a great time of year. Love spring. There's a lot of things going on in the city. There's a lot of things happening. There's, you know, the sports are, the soccer's back and the, you know, all those things and blossoms and everything's just growing right now. Um, with that, I would like to see if we can encourage our city members to, to clean up and shine up a little bit. I don't know if we can put some things on Facebook, but just, you know, let's do a, let's do a city cleanup. As I drive around, um, there, there's a lot of stuff out there. And so, we're, you know, we, we focused on a couple of businesses, but there's a lot of residences that could, could use some help or whatever we can do to, to help our others, our neighbors to, to make Far West shine like it, like it should and like it does. We are really, uh, a, a great community in so many ways. So just wanted to say that. Thank you so much, uh, to our city employees. The parks, things with everything starting to grow are, are looking great. Um, they're, they're starting off well and so, the office staff are always making sure everything's done. We had our, our Easter egg hunt. Even with the weather, it was well attended. And, uh, it's, it's amazing how fast we can set that up and tear it down and have so many happy faces. So thanks to everyone who participates in that. I, one last item on the agenda.
I move that we adjourn.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second the motion.
Motion by Tim, second by Bob. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.